One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're gonna ask Father John Jacobs. Thank you, thank you, church to come forward and give us the, lead us in the dedication and the pledge. Will everyone please stand?
Before I say the dedication, I would like us to take a moment of silence if we may to remember Eugene Esquire, who was a long time business person in downtown Palacka and did a lot for this city and for this county. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we pray that the Holy Spirit will come upon all that are present here. We pray for firstly, for our elected officials and our appointed officials, that Lord, that they will provide the information to each other and to the public so that an informed decision may be made. We pray for all of those that will come in and pray, Lord, that they will be heard. Not that changes will be made, but that the best decision possible, under all conditions, will be made. We pray for wisdom, discernment, and courtesy for all present. In Jesus' most holy name, we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father Jacobs. We're gonna go ahead and have our roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Borum?
Present.
Mr. Campbell?
Present.
And Commissioner Norwood is await tonight.
Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the June 11th, 2015?
Yes.
Supposed to approve by Commissioner Campbell, second by Vice Mayor Brown. Is there any discussion? Call the question on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. We're now moving to our public recognition section. And this is the fun part for me. So we've got public recognition for fireworks. For those of you who had an opportunity to come out for our fireworks on the 4th of July, it was an awesome example of our citizens coming together and having a great time. In my years here in Palacka, it was the longest and the best fireworks that I've seen, and that's with my biased opinion. But it was, it was an awesome presentation, and we've been everybody involved in it. And we had the help of a lot of our citizens and our local businesses in putting the fireworks together, and we want to take this time to honor those people who had an opportunity to help contribute to the fireworks, and we want to go ahead and give them special recognition at this time. If I may have a little bit of help. We've got plaques for, we've got plaques for our $500 and above donors, and it says it's a certificate of recognition, this is a certificate of recognition and appreciation, presented to the donor for outstanding generosity and dedication to the community service in the 4th of July 2015 fireworks display. And the first one goes to Florida Power and Light, is their representative from Florida Power and Light. And we'd ask everybody to kind of stay up front, because we're gonna try to get a photo afterwards. Human Resources Development Services, certificate of recognition. How are you ladies?
Good, very good. Thanks so much.
That's our county, that's our county probation office. Vico Palace Florida Incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Palacka Gas Authority has their, had their monthly board meeting tonight, but we want to recognize them as a major contributor. Mr. Horn, will you accept on behalf of the Gas Authority?
Certainly.
Put your general counsel handle, just a first thing. Also, we have a certificate of recognition for Art Air Incorporated. Is everyone here from Art Air? Bad Cop Home Furniture and More. Bates Hewitt and Ford Insurance Agency. Fort House Marina LLC. Fountain Gloria and St. John's Cafe LLC. Bradley Steak and Seafood. Car Rigs and Ingram LLC. Clay Electric. First Baptist Church. I know there's at least one member per class. Johnson Over Turf Fueler Homes Incorporated. Betsy Jordan. John and Linda Larissa. Master Shire Home. Lola Newman. Persevero Associates. Richard Paralon DND. The Pink Door. Riverfront Development Group. Century Turmatty Pest Control Incorporated. Stone Engineering Group. Conrad and Elizabeth Vanderenberg. Five Star Credit Union. H.R. Wallace Land Surveyor. We've gone course design. Betty Willis and family.
Thank you very much.
We want to get everybody to get a connection. I want to personally take this time to thank you for your contributions and your support of fireworks. It was an awesome event, and it would not have been possible without your donations and your contribution. And so we thank you for that, and we will be, come on, call on your connection. Our next public recognition is for a lady that we call the Mother of the Commission. She tries to refer herself to grandmother, but she has too much energy for a grandmother. We'd ask Vice Mayor Brown and her family to please come forward at this time.
I have a tribe now. Don't let me have to go get you.
I will call by name, Mr. Brown.
It's too crowded.
I see both of them, Teddy and Maurice, you guys come forward, please. I know you should do, we don't need proxy today, come on.
Come on, friends.
We got a Johnny in every level, bro. Lot of them.
For those of you who don't know, Commissioner Brown, by far, is the most traveled of anybody in our city commission. She's more well-known than anybody around here. I just had an opportunity to meet the president of the Florida League of Cities, and before he could say anything else, it started with Mary Lawson Brown. This conversation starts with Mary Lawson Brown going to tell you this. And so everywhere I go, when you mention Palacka within the Florida League of Cities, within state government, you're gonna hear the name Mary Lawson Brown. Her family's been here, they're celebrating 100 years for their funeral home this year, but she does so much for this community, and a lot of people don't know and many take it for granted. But we were at the, going to these Florida League of Cities meeting, and the Florida League of Cities was recognizing those individuals for the Home Rule Hero. And those are individuals who've gone over beyond the call of duty, the legislative process, to get out and talk to legislators, to set, to set meetings up, get on the telephone, to lobby, to do whatever's necessary to try to get funding and support for activities within our community. And Ms. Brown knows everybody, Ms. Brown is very active within the legislature, and she has, and she was recognized for that, and there were a handful of people recognized, the newspaper did an article on it. But we want to take this time to just share with our citizens, the hometown, the Home Rule Hero Award. It says, "For being a champion in the defense and protection of municipal home rules, the Florida League of Cities presents its 2015 Home Rule Hero to Vice Mayor Mary Lawson Brown, City of Palacka." And we just want to recognize her and what she does for our community.
Oh, not to speak. I laugh, I wonder how long it can come up, because I started out an only child or only children, and now I have a tribe, so I wanted to be part of my tribe. I want to thank my family first, because I would not be able to travel and do the things that I've done if it wasn't for them and my staff, and also my other family, the City of Palacka, because you all inspired me to go and work very hard to do the best that we can to do for everybody and make it better for everyone to live when I'm only in the City of Palacka. But again, the United States, and all the world, thank you very much.
Maurice, did she make her one time?
They don't give me but two minutes.
And I will, I will now turn the mic over to Vice Mayor Brown again.
I'm really proud to serve on this commission now. We have a new commission of younger people here with vision and love for the town that we live in. And the Florida League of Cities has started an institute that they call the Institute of Elected Officials, Municipal Officials. It is a training spot for all of us elected people to go to, to learn how to do government better. Right now, when I came along, they didn't have it, had to learn the hard way. But all of these guys took time out, left their homes and their jobs and their families to take this course so that they could be better prepared for you. And this is a certificate of completion for our mayor. Certificate of completion for Mr. Borum. Certificate of completion for Justin Campbell. These courses are not the easiest in the world, they give them a good foundation, and they know where to jump off places for them to start and work hard. It gives them insight into budgeting and getting along and working with communities, how to bring communities together. And I'm very proud to say that all of them went and they passed. Congratulations, guys.
We're now moving to our public comment section of the agenda, item number two. We'll limit comments to three minutes, or we'll be no action taken on the topics of discussion. I won't let you slide. You're actually up, everyone else is on the agenda before they're calling. Mr. Hammond?
My name is Jerry Hammond. I live on 122 Hillty Lane in East Palacka. I'm the president of Palacka Main Street, and we would like to have an opportunity for our executive board to meet with each of the commissioners individually. I know we can't meet all at once, but individually to give you a bit education of what Main Street's all about, and how the organization is supposed to operate, and so forth, just so you can see where we're coming from and what our interest in helping the City of Palacka really are. So with that said, sometime in the next few days, if y'all don't mind, I'll give each one of you a call and try to set up a time, if we can maybe sit for 20, 30 minutes, just to give you a brief summary of the program and let you ask any questions you may want to ask. And of course, we're gonna include Mr. Suggs in that too, since he's new.
There may be an opportunity to do it all at one time if you want, instead of doing it separately, we can do it maybe 30 minutes before, instead of maybe do it an hour before our next meeting. I think that gives us an opportunity to do.
No way it'd be easy for me to remember, the executive board, super other.
We just have to notice that you're.
That'd be great, we could do that, be really nice.
Or do you have something before that?
Works out. Works out at three, but I think there'll probably be enough time.
We've been working between, we're working at five in transition.
Very good, just let me know, and we'll get us set up, and we'd be glad to be here. Thank you.
Anyone else here for public comment? See, now public comment's closed. Now move to the consent agenda. Item number three on the agenda, item number eight, 3A, is to adopt a resolution number 2015-1146, authorizing the mayor and city clerks to execute and attest shared construction of North Florida LLC's change to order number five in the amount of $11,902.78 to extend prepaid electrical service to hangar improvements project at the Palacka Municipal Airport, 100 percent grant funded. Item B, reappoint Larry Beaton and Mary Reeves to the Palacka Historic Preservation Board as members representing Pluton County Historical Society and a member with contracted experience respectively, for three-year terms to expire June 30th, 2018. They're both in comments. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, and a second by Vice Mayor Brown. Any discussion? Call the question on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number four on the agenda. Fire assessment fee, executive summary report, draft directory resolution, and critical event schedule. Mr. Reynolds.
Matt Reynolds, finance director. I put together a short presentation to kind of go over the fire assessment fee and the information that we were able to obtain via the executive summary report. On April 9th of this year, the city commission approved a work order with Mr. Lawson, Mark Lawson, to draft this executive summary report that you have included in the agenda packet, and that includes several funding examples within it. So I kind of did a short description of each item that's in the agenda. The executive summary report itself, it describes the simplified fire method of apportionment. That is a method that uses a two-tier approach regarding readiness to serve the fire, and it includes several funding examples. We also asked Mr. Lawson to do a separate funding example, which is included in the final addendum number one, that's also included in your packet. The other item that's included is a draft directory resolution, and that authorizes Mr. Lawson to draft the necessary documentation to place, the fire assessment fee into place. I believe Chief Lambert also handed out an updated critical event schedule, the one that was included in the agenda was based on a date of this being presented at the last city commission meeting. However, we were not prepared and didn't have the presentation put together, so I handed out a updated critical events schedule. The next slide shows the actions that are required to implement the fire assessment fee. Number one is determining the amount to be levied for both tiers under the simplified fire method of apportionment. One is per tax parcel amount, and the other is the amount of $14,000 of relative improvement value. The second item is passing the directory resolution that's included in the agenda packet tonight with both of those amounts from step one included. Final number three is go ahead and notice on the internet by publication the institutional properties as if they are not going to be exempted. And number four is take all actions necessary to hold a public hearing on August 6th and adopt the fire assessments. The proposed funding level that we were presenting here tonight are a little bit different than the funding scenarios that are in the executive summary report and the final addendum. We tried many different scenarios to try to come up with a more equitable balance for the fire assessment fee, and we'll present those here. 125 per tax parcel and 246 per thousand dollars of relative improvement value. And what that would do is that would fund a gross amount of approximately 78 percent of the fire department budget. However, there's a couple of categories. One has to be exempted, and that's governmental assessments on any governmentally owned property. Those are exempt by Florida statute from special assessments. The second category is the institutional category, which are churches and nonprofits, and they could be exempted from the fire assessment fee, and that amount would be paid from other legally available funds in the general fund. If both categories were exempted, the net revenues to the city would be approximately 59 percent of the fire department budget. In the first year, we would be, we would need to bill the fire assessment fees in-house. And by billing them in-house and talking with Mr. Lawson, 60 percent collection rate on that first year is a safe, is a safe number to use, and so first year we would expect about $750,000. For comparative purposes, the millage rate may decrease in the first year by 2.1782 mills from 9.17 down to just below seven. And that would result in a revenue neutral balance between the abhorrent taxes and the fire assessment fee in the general fund. So the amount that we would decrease in abhorrent taxes is approximately that $743,318. And that's, those amounts are subject to verification with consultants through Mr. Lawson and final budget decision making by the city commission in September. The second year, and then again, this is assuming if we place the fire assessment fees onto the annual tax bills, we could assume a higher collection rate of 95 percent. And again, for comparative purposes, with full collection of the fire assessment fee, the millage rate may decrease another one mill from 6.9 down to 5.9. Next slide is a couple of specific examples of residential properties, and used the mayor and a few of the commissioners, didn't want to pick on anybody in particular, so we decided to use you guys. So you can see on the first line, the current city abhorrent taxes that you paid in 2014, and then what would be paid under the first year, and then the second year. And the second slide we have is for commercial properties. These are commercial properties. And so it shows a couple of different businesses here and here in and around downtown Palacka. The first address is Don Holmes's address, business address. The second address is Mayor Hill's office. The third address is David Miner's property that he is working on, improving now at the corner of St. John's, and I believe that's third, commercial on the first floor, residential on the second floor. And then the fourth address is Gullet Title. And we wanted to kind of include those buildings. That's kind of been something that we've seen over the years, as the commission wants to see a revitalization of downtown, and we wanted to show that fire assessment fee would help ease the burden on property owners downtown who wish to redevelop their property. Benefits of implementing a fire assessment fee would be diversification of general fund revenues, which provides more flexibility in levying abhorrent taxes, as you would have two different revenue streams to be balanced. Another benefit is the ability to lower the millage rate. Greater attractiveness to potential new businesses and greater potential job creation, as well as it's a more equitable balance for fire services provided to property owners. It also adds a level of transparency in regards to the required funding for the fire department. Instead of, you know, citizens asking, you know, what their millage pays for, they'll have, you know, two separate amounts, one that you can actually see what you're paying for fire service, even though that's not funding the entire amount of the fire department budget. So, and another benefit is it strengthens the Palacka's ability to manage the crisis financially. So that's basically all I had. If any of the commissioners have any questions or concerns.
I have a question. Is there any way for us to sit down and talk with our churches and our government entities to see if they would volunteer to help fund this, put something into this fund, because they're getting just as much service as everybody else is? Can they do it voluntarily if we approach them? Because what's fair is fair.
You mean governmental properties?
Governmental properties and the church properties. We've got about 50 churches between the railroad track and down here.
There is, I think there's an opportunity with the fire fee to start to have dialogue with the statutorily exempted property owners, i.e. the governmental property owners, as well as the churches and nonprofits, and see if they're, see if they're willing to move forward on that. I think that those are all things that can be done just by having appropriate meetings with those individuals, information sessions as well, and trying to, and going forward from there. At this stage... At this stage, that would not necessarily be where we need to be. The question tonight, more so than anything else, is are we willing to move forward with Mr. Lawson's, move forward with Mr. Lawson in having the fire service fee instead of everything else in place? Moving forward is in order. And it's really, at this point, we're in a position where if we're gonna extend them, if we agreed to pay the money for the fire service fee, then I think we need to be absolutely sure that we are going to move forward with it. To me, it really doesn't make a lot of sense to spend the money for, to spend the money for the drafting and to not move forward with this assessment fee. And so I don't think it's a situation where we really need to, to think about whether we need to do it or what the benefits are gonna be. Because we just sat in a budget workshop. And in that budget workshop, we were able to see that based upon the proposals that are in place, we'll have two hundred thousand dollars in reserves. If we don't do, if we don't do something. Where we are is our millage rate is almost maxed out at nine point one seven four. We've incurred significant debt. It's a lot of places that things could have been adjusted. But we are in a, and really in financial, in a financial crisis of sorts within the city itself. And we've got to be proactive in how we deal with those things, even from the state. Because it affects our credit rating, it affects everything. And I think that we, this is the first step in having everyone appropriately share in the services that are provided for the city. And so to answer your question in a long form, yes, I think there are opportunities for us to sit down and have dialogue. I think as individual commissioners, you have that, you have that right to do so. And also, as a commission as a whole, I think for Suggs and Mr. Reynolds will be proactively doing that if the commission so chooses to move forward tonight.
Mayor, I really would like to see us sit down with county commissioners, church leaders, whoever takes in this room, and put it to them to know that the crisis is here and that everybody's problem, they get the same service that we do. I know what we need this very badly because we do need to shore up our budget and make sure we have enough for crisis or any other thing. But I think that people need to realize that they always fuss and want services. If something happens, they want police there, they want fire there. And if a house caught on fire or a church caught on fire, they get the same services some little old lady's house who's trying to put out. And I would like to see us look at putting a big day workshop or whatever it is together to get them to understand and to see if we can get the help that we need to even make this work better for us as far as the funding that will come in.
I think we can, I think for me, I would say that the better route is to have the, during your public hearing, you can also go out and speak to these different entities. You've got several different entities. You've got, most of the churches are a part of associations. But we can actually go out and speak to those, speak to those entities and give them, you know, and be able to give them more insight as to what our financial situation is and move from there. I think a lot of times sitting in the room, people, the conversation gets lost as it relates to what's going on overall. But I think if we're able to move, to go out to these entities and actually meet them at where they are, and whether to address it with the congregation or whatever it may be, it creates a different opportunity for us to be able to, to have it become, you know, more, more personalized towards that entity. But I think there has to be a buy-in, that we can go out and do that with the churches. Ultimately, I think the thing is to understand is it's a small portion that we're, it's nineteen percent of what's out there is, you know, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars or so for those entities is a significant amount of money. We can definitely go out and look at that. But I think the overall picture is we have to look at the big picture as well. And we, and the conversation can be had, without a doubt.
That's all I have.
Can we do both? I really think sometimes I know we need to be one-on-one with some people, but we need to come together sometimes and let other people that can come in here and hear what they say and see, talk to them, do it. I'd like to be able to think about it. I think that we need to get a better understanding. It will lower our millage for those people who are paying the taxes. But it's only about fifty-one percent of the population of the city paying taxes. And the other thing is we need to look at annexation because you run in and out of town several times before you get to the outskirts. And I'd like to see that looked at too.
Mr. Lawson, can you come forward?
I'm glad to answer that.
Just take your name and address for later.
My name is Mark Lawson. My address is Meca Sue, Florida. That's a suburb of Tallahassee. This is a win-win situation of what the Vice Mayor brings up. I think you've got a right, Mayor, that you, this is a decision to make a direction to move forward. We have a lot of good data for you. And if you want to go forward in properly notice, I would tell you to notice all the possibilities that you can, which include institutional properties, which are churches and all your institutions. I recommend you do that. You can always come off that if you like at a later date. The governments aren't susceptible to the assessment. But they are susceptible to an inter local agreement, as the Vice Mayor suggests. So as a part of the process, when we develop the role, we'll give you the hundred thirty-seven properties identified by parcel number. And you should do, go out and do the outreach because, A, it creates buy-in. So that's your win-win. If you can get your governmental entities to participate, great. I can't guarantee you one way or the other, but it's all to be done concurrently. So back to your point, move forward with your directory resolution. And as a part of that, naturally will come the information on the parties that either exempted by law or could be exempted as a matter of policy, which are the institutions. That's a win-win, I think.
And I just want us to be fair in what we do. We are here to take care of everybody, but everybody needs to get take care of themselves too.
No, I wholeheartedly agree with that. And I think the fire assessment fee is an opportunity to do just that. We look at, if we recall the examples that were given, we see in the first year, a lot of the commercial properties received a higher rate over the first year, and very small, it's very small rate in comparison to what they're paying right now. But we also saw savings, what everybody said, my law office, over, over the course of the four examples that we had in place during the second year. So there is an opportunity for us to actually make our community more appealing from a business perspective as it relates to downtown and also overall. Because everyone starts to share in the issues that we have in place. And that's every citizen, that's every business sharing in the overall, the overall obligation to fund our fire services.
I'm, I'm, but I got another question. Somebody called me today and said that vacant properties, they are concerned about vacant properties, the having to pay, pay for vacant properties and the improvements. So I just want to bring that to our attention. When we do it, it's for all properties, right?
Correct, for all parcels. So are there any more questions? Seeing, is there a recommendation? I mean, we got some public comment.
Well, I have, I have one there.
Yeah, what is it? Could be my permission of board, I'm sorry.
For moving forward, that in the cause to move forward was, was the cause to move forward with the comprehensive?
We discussed that earlier, and Mr. Lawson gave us an estimate of sixty-five minus the ten that we've kind of already paid for the deferred portion, which is kind of considered, I guess, a retainer if we move forward.
The other question was, I know churches and nonprofits, they can be included as well. But if, I thought if we, if we move forward, it has to be either all or nothing, correct? I mean, in terms of, if we say, if we move forward tonight and say, hey, we're, we want to move forward with this. Should it be included in this phase or will it be included in a?
It wouldn't be included in this phase.
Okay.
I, I got another question. Somebody brought up putting in on our tax bill. And they were concerned that it would create a bigger problem. I want to bring these things to your attention so we can be thinking about them as we get ready to vote, that it might be better if we have, have it collected a different way and people could pay it in quarterly or something so that they can get it done for those folks who don't have a lot of funding.
There are, if we have the ability in the later stages to put together whatever programs we need to deal with hardships as they may be and to really, to spare people, to actually look at the dignity of the individuals that are involved that have true hardship. And the parameters of those programs is something that we can put together at this stage. It's, we are simply deciding on whether we're gonna move forward with that direction. The overall implementation of the program, the details that go into the program, the little nuances or things that can be developed at the different stages that are outlined, your critical stage outlined. And I definitely think that those are considerations that we have to be conscious of. One of the things that I can, and one of the things that really, that I really like was the fact that no citizen has lost their property as a result of our assessment fee in the state of Florida. And I think that more so than anything else, we're not here to take the property of our citizens based upon the assessment of the fee. We're here to try to create fairness and equity as it relates to everyone taken apart and dealing with the services that are provided. And we want to consciously find a way to put our community in a better situation so that we're no longer one storm away from being bankrupt. And that's my main concern, that if I could put Palatka on better feet while we're here. And, you know, that's our biggest thing. So is there any more questions?
If not, we got, we got one comment card from Elektra Kitchen. Please come forward.
You all brought up a lot of things that didn't get addressed separately, but I won't do it given the lack of time. For thirty-six years, I worked with tax assessment parcels in the property officers' office. I worked with delinquent taxes and taxes. Let me give you an example. You drop in on an average assessed value of twenty-five thousand dollars improvement value, you go to seven mils, your tax bills will be a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Your fire fees will be a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Your total taxes on that bill, which includes the fee, and when that fee goes on that tax bill, it is a tax. To quote the late G. Niesmore when he stood right here, by any other name, it's a tax. So a twenty-five thousand dollar parcel, your taxes, your fee and your taxes will be three hundred and fifty dollars. Currently with your nine point one seven four nine millage, your taxes on twenty-five thousand dollars are two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The fire fee is gonna make people's tax bills go up. Now, there are not, there's forty-four hundred parcels in the city of Palatka, and a little under five hundred are wholly exempt, and that includes you government. It's not fifty percent, that's a common misconception. Number one, this is dependent on the taxes being paid. A large number of delinquent taxes are in Putnam County and Palatka. A large number of people do not pay their taxes, they cannot pay them. If that tax bill is not paid, your fire fee is not paid. The fire fee is going to add several hundred dollars, anywhere from a hundred and forty-four dollars to three hundred and thirty-one dollars. And I'm taking only the twenty-five thousand dollar assessed value off of this thing in the packet. It's probably a little bit more based on Mr. Reynolds revised figure, but that gives you an idea. Everybody's taxes are gonna go up anywhere from a hundred and forty-four to three hundred and thirty-one. I'm talking about single-family residential, not the businesses. And also, you talk about wanting to lower the millage, so you'll lower the taxes. Okay, that's fine on the surface. Okay, we got a low millage come to, come to Palatka. But when you get your tax bill, your tax bill's gonna be really, really big. You lower the millage, you put the fire fee on there, same thing, you got a large tax bill. If a business can't afford to pay the taxes, do you really want them in Palatka? If they don't have the money to pay the taxes? Why do you want businesses and people to come to Palatka? Not because you like them that much, but because you like their money. That's just the bottom line of government. You have to have money to run government, you want taxes. The other thing is, millage has a cap. Millage is capped on the state legislature at ten mils. You cannot exceed it unless you ask the legislature to exceed it, and they might not let you do it. Fees have no cap whatsoever, period. You can do anything you want. Prime example is the Putnam County garbage fee. First year, it was on a separate bill, oh la di da, that was wonderful. The next year, they combined it with the tax bill. Started up around eighty-seven dollars, it's now four hundred and four dollars for county citizens. Right now in the city of Palatka, you're paying two hundred and sixty-five dollars on your garbage bill. You add a two hundred and forty-four dollar fire fee, then you got five hundred and five dollars on a twenty-five thousand dollar piece of property that currently wouldn't be paying anything under homestead in particular, although there's only a hundred parcels that don't pay under homestead. This is just not a good idea. There's no cap to it. You are, you can advertise, oh, we have a low millage rate. But when they see that tax bill, they're gonna think about that. That's a tax, period. And finally, just please don't do it. We looked at this back in, I think it was in the eighties. And the city decided not to do it. You can call anything you want to, but when it's on that tax bill, it is a tax. And when the taxes go delinquent, and they don't get paid, you're not getting a fee. And I don't think this, this is not the way to do it, it's not right. Putnam County looked at this several years ago, and eight hundred people turned out and said, no. The county commission was going to vote for it, they reversed their vote. Four to one, they voted against it. So I don't think this is a good way to do it. In my work, other places where people pay their taxes all the time, they don't pay them that well in Putnam County, they don't pay them that well in Palatka. It won't work here, it's not a good deal, don't do it.
Mr. Kitchen? Is there, seeing that we don't have any other comment cards, we will, we'll close our public comment. I don't have any other comment cards to deal with this specification. What's the pleasure of the board at this time? Is there any other discussion?
Is there any way that you can look at not putting in on the, on the tax? I still think sticking it on our, on our taxes because if somebody's paying a mortgage, that makes them have to pay more on the mortgage because they put that in escrow. Is there any other, what is, Mr. Lawson, that these funds are collecting beside? Yeah, are there any other alternatives for collection of these funds?
There are several alternatives. The appropriate way to do it in the first year is by direct mailing. I would tell you that in the subsequent year, you've got plenty of time to put it on the tax bill. And actually, the tax bill method's much more equitable because those folks that do have mortgages, mortgage companies will understand that and put that in their escrow, so they aren't asked to pay a full-on sum of funds. That's the most efficient way to do it, is actually the most fair way to do it. I know of no one who's lost a property on just a fire assessment or in this instance. But even if there were such a situation, the tax bill collection method, Mr. Van Essentir, who used to be the longtime counsel for Tax Breakfast Association, will be quick to tell you that the tax bill collection method was designed to effectively be more equitable to the individual property owner because it's a statutory process and people get a long period of time to catch up, if you will. And the other thing that we will do, assuming you go forward, is we will place in your ordinance, it's called hardship deferment laws, that will allow those people truly in need to, in the confines of the managers of the assessment coordinator's office, come and work out ways to deal with that. So I would say that for the very, very few that are impacted that way, the way we approach it will allow you to treat them with respect and independent of the larger issue of raising the funds. So the whole point is, let's find the most efficient way to do it, but be as fair as we possibly can to that group within the property owning class that is less fortunate. So there's ways to do it. First year, you wouldn't do it on the tax bill at all. We would recommend that you segue into that so that everybody understands what's going on in the subsequent years. It is the best method.
I hear you saying that. What my daughter does, loan mortgages, and I hear her talking to people about saving their homes. And it just, it raises the line that we do have people that struggle just to see what's on their tax.
And we want to be cognizant of that. As, and I advise governments, I want them all to understand that. We'll write the documentation to do that for you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else from the commission? Seeing, what's the pleasure of the commission at this time? Any comments to serve?
I want, I want to help you on any of these.
I don't, I don't think we have much of a choice in the predicament that we're in right now. I think we gotta be able to deliver the basic services to people. We've got people who's, I mean wastewater treatment, we know what we're dealing with there. We know what we're dealing with, our sanitation department. We gotta be able to deliver these services. And the only way we're gonna be able to do that... that in an equitable manner, we, we, this is probably the best way to go. I'm not a big fan of taxing people. We didn't get here overnight, but think of, you know, I thought about it all for, for some, some time now. We just, you know, we don't have any, a whole lot of options in terms of, I guess, raising revenue for. And this is the most fair and equitable way that I know of.
Um, just real briefly, I, if we were to move forward with it, I think one of the most things that, even as I talked about it in our one-on-one, is making sure that we educate our citizens in a way that is completely understanding. I would often go by, once we do it, make sure it's in a way that even a third grader can understand. Again, we, this commission, if anybody knows, we have literally made some very tough decisions. And again, we are citizens as well, so keep that in mind. And if, again, we do decide to move forward, we are doing so with us in mind as well. So, again, I think we have to really take a lot of things into consideration and make a lot of tough decisions that oftentimes may not be pleasing to the vast majority. But again, we are trying to get mileage rates down, we're trying to do several different things, and again, this is only an option of one of...